Mrs. Sheehan, may we please have the roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Paul?
Present.
Commissioner Greavy?
Here.
Commissioner Werblin?
Present.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Cruzen? We'll come back around, she's walking in. Commissioner Matthews?
Present.
Chairperson Childs?
Present.
Just a second. And Commissioner Cruzen?
Present.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask Commissioner Evans if she'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Information on providing public comments. Persons wishing to address the Planning Commission on subjects not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items except as authorized by law. Off-agenda items from the public will be taken under consideration without discussion by the Commission and may be referenced to staff. Comments will be accepted in person or via Zoom. Public comment instructions. To speak on an agenda item in person, please complete a speaker's card and give it to the secretary before the meeting or at the latest, prior to the time for public comments on that item. When joining via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or press nine on your phone to request to speak. You will be called on by name and will have three minutes to speak. Approval of the agenda. Next is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve today's agenda.
Is there a second?
I do second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. We will vote by roll call. Mrs. Sheehan, will you conduct the roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Greavy?
Yes.
Commissioner Werblin?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Commissioner Matthews?
Approved.
Commissioner Cruzen?
Yes.
And Chairperson Childs?
Yes. So the approval of the minutes of October 12th, 2022 is our next item. Are there any changes to those minutes?
No, there are not.
Do I have the motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 12th, 2022 meeting.
Is there a second?
I do second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as submitted. Mrs. Sheehan, will you conduct the roll call?
Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Greavy?
Yes.
Commissioner Werblin?
Approved.
Commissioner Evans?
Abstained.
Commissioner Matthews?
Approved.
Commissioner Cruzen?
Abstained.
And Chairperson Childs?
Approved. Public comments. This is a time for the public to speak on items not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. I will now open the public comment period.
We have no comments.
Okay. So I do not have any speaker cards for the public comment. Do we have any speakers on Zoom? Okay. Okay. I will now close the public comment period. Scheduled matters. The next item on the agenda is scheduled matters. For each itemized item, there will be a presentation by city staff. For items that involve application requests, I will then ask the applicant to address the commission if they so desire. Then I will open the comment period via Zoom and in-house. I will close the comment period after all comments have been provided and after all our questions regarding the testimony during the comment period have been answered. After the comment period is closed, the commission will deliberate on the item and may have additional questions for staff. We cannot take additional testimony or questions from the public after the comment period is closed. So our first item is Item A, Appeal of Minor Development Conditions of Approval and Use Permit for Edison RV Storage.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. I am Maile Sheehan. I'll be presenting the item tonight. Um, oh. Excuse me, this is not the right presentation.
You can use this one. You can do that.
How do we get to the... Let's try. Well, that's okay. It's the same item, so it's coming back to you.
There we go.
All right. Please excuse that. Sorry. As you guys are aware, this item was presented to you last week, so a little bit of confusion on the PowerPoint naming. But this PowerPoint's a little reduced. We'll run through, generally speaking, what the project was, and I'll hit some background topics. So. The project is located on a 4.2-acre site at 490 Edison Court. Currently, the site is undeveloped. It is vacant, and it has a limited industrial zoning designation. The project includes 132 covered parking stalls for recreational vehicle storage. It also includes six uncovered parking stalls. The carports will be constructed of galvanized steel and have solar panels on the roofs. The project is essentially an extension of the self-storage facility to the east, and therefore, the access will be from Lopes Road, which is at the east, and the circulation will filter through the self-storage facility to the RV site, and then exiting will be onto Edison Court. Per our zoning ordinance, the entire RV storage area will be screened by a decorative eight-foot solid masonry wall, and there are some landscape improvements along the Edison Court frontage. Here is that site plan. You can roughly see on the right-hand side of your screen the existing self-storage facility, and there is a connection point roughly right here, which will bring vehicles into the site. They can find their parking stalls, and then the exiting would be onto Edison Court. Going into some background for the project, the application was received on April 7th. It had a bit of a longer review process due to CEQA, California's Environmental Quality Act. The project is adjacent to Jamison Canyon Creek, and originally, there were some design challenges with the stormwater outfall in that creek. However, city staff and the applicant design team were able to come up with creative solutions to avoid any impacts on the creek, and the project could be found exempt. On June 13th, we held a zoning administrator public hearing to approve the project. During that hearing, the applicant team was present, where they raised several concerns about the conditions of approval. Specifically, they had concerns regarding trash enclosure signage, the sign, or the size, excuse me, of the trash enclosure, as well as some minor utility improvement questions. So in order to give us more time to collaborate and discuss, the hearing was continued, and no formal action was taken on that day. On June 20th, we did meet with the applicant team to run through those items. We were able to resolve the more minor utility questions and concerns. So the primary topics remained regarding the trash enclosure signage and the size of the enclosure. On August 1st, we continued that public hearing that originally occurred on June 13th, where staff did present some modified conditions. We were able to come to sort of a consensus on the trash enclosure signage. We made some revisions to the language. We presented that to the applicant team. No other members of the public were attending. We did receive public comment from the applicant team, and an action for approval was made. As you are all aware, at your last meeting, the applicant team did appeal that zoning administrator approval. They still had concerns regarding the signage stating that customers shall have access to the waste receptacles and carts. They were citing that the two cubic yard containers for waste and recycling was above and beyond what was necessary for their business options or operations. And they also identified the city's indemnification clause in both the minor development conditions of approval and the use permit. Due to their concerns regarding the signage, they felt that the indemnification clause should either be removed or revised so that the city held some liability to their project. During that hearing, you guys heard from the appellant, and he was able to provide his reasonings for his four requested appeals. There was internal discussion amongst the Planning Commission, where ultimately, a motion was had to uphold the zoning administrator's approval of the project, but partially grant the appeal in the fact that we were able to reduce the trash enclosure dimensions. So the trash enclosure dimensions condition was reduced from 18 feet by nine to 13 feet by eight. And due to that motion, staff went back. We revised the resolution. We revised the conditions, and we're bringing it here for you today for a final review and action. So with that, I recommend that the commission adopt Resolution PC 2022-12, upholding the zoning administrator's approval of minor development review and use permit and partially granting an appeal to modify the project conditions of approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Maile, thank you for that presentation. Do any members of the commission have questions for staff? Okay. In hearing none, and I don't see that the appellant is here tonight.
Can we confirm that we have nobody on Zoom?
No.
All right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairperson, I do have a question for Ms. Sheehan?
Yes.
What is the next step? If this is approved, the recommendation, then what will be the next step? Will this then go to City Council for approval?
So if you were to take an action to approve, the appellant has the option, or the applicant has the option, to appeal your decision to the City Council, but it does not go to City Council by default. They would have to submit an appeal.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I am hearing that we do actually have somebody on Zoom. I believe it is the applicant team.
Okay.
Yes.
We have Deanna Dean.
Okay. We're ready to hear from the application team.
Hi, folks. Hello?
Hello?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for letting me speak just briefly. We are, I am here tonight mostly because of what I'm perceiving to be somewhat unusual process. I am, I understood that this was not a full, I think we all understood, this was not a full hearing, but in fact, just an opportunity for the commission to approve the resolution with the modifications that you had already voted on last time we were there. There were some challenges with how this was agendized. I don't have a particular objection, but I did want to make sure you know, I am here, happy to answer questions, if there are any, from the commission. But my expect, and I can't really see that there's anybody else here, but happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do any members of the commission have questions for the appellant?
I have a question. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
I can.
So Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Is it a correct statement that the major issue is with only the signage on the trash enclosure? I know there was an objection to having the trash enclosure, but if there were a resolution of the signage issue, would the applicant be amenable to proceed?
Yes, particularly with the change that was voted on by the commission last time we were there. I feel like it was more than a week ago, but when we were there on the 12th. So yes, with the reduced enclosure, absolutely.
So I guess this is a broader question, perhaps for Maile and our city attorney. If the commission were so inclined, could we approve the motion with the addition that staff and the applicant work out a mutually agreed-to wording for the signage to allow the project to move forward? Is that kind of a motion something that should the commission approve would be acceptable to the city?
I'll defer to Ethan in a moment here. Speaking as staff, the current signage condition is what staff is recommending. So I would say if the commission wanted to provide further direction on what that specific language would be, I believe that would be a little more appropriate than deferring to staff to coordinate with the applicant, as at this point, we have coordinated since April, and this is the language that staff is comfortable with. And I'll let Ethan speak in terms of appropriate processes.
Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly with Maile. I think it would be appropriate to provide direction on what the condition should be as we did with the last modification of the conditions of approval. There, we just reduced the size of the trash enclosure. Here, we'd be addressing a separate condition, so we'd likely end up in the same position again, where we would bring back another modified resolution for approval pursuant to your guys' direction.
And so just to be clear, that would be the approval for the change in the signage, gentlemen, excuse me?
Correct. We would need a motion that would direct staff and tell them how that condition should be worded. We can go back and find that condition number. I believe it's special condition 1.1C2.
What page is that on?
If you are looking at the zoning administrator conditions of approval, it is on the first page in Section 1.1, Subsection C, Sub 2.
I'd be happy to read it aloud if everyone is wanting it, of course. So the condition reads, "The following waste management signage shall be posted onsite. Final design, verbiage, and placement location shall be subject to the review and approval of the Public Works Department." Subsection 1 says, "Signage identifying source-separated recyclables, organics, and garbage recyclables, or receptacles, excuse me, in accordance with Fairfield Municipal Code, Section 9.220." And the second subsection states, "Signage stating tenants slash customers have access to trash receptacles slash carts for the disposal of minor waste and debris." And it is that last subpoint that the applicant had submitted an appeal for.
Can you clarify? It's the minor waste and debris? That's the part?
The part the applicant appealed was the signage in whole, requiring or stating tenants and customers have access to the trash receptacles slash carts. tenants and customers have access to the trash receptacles slash carts.
Thank you. Well, actually, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry I wasn't present last week. And is there a concern that, that might be misconstrued, like who's a tenant or who's a customer? I'm just trying to, to, you know, get more particular about what the issue is with the signage.
Sure. The applicant had noted they felt the signage would welcome overabundance of waste from their tenants. There was some conversation that depending on where the signage was located, if it was visible to the general public, maybe others would also dump. To those points, we did identify that the site is going to be screened by an eight-foot masonry wall. There is, staff is not recommending that the sign is visible from the public right away. And the reasoning for the condition from staff's perspective was to ensure that the tenants and customers did have access to the trash enclosure. Every commercial or industrial project within the city of Fairfield is required to have a trash enclosure that is accessible.
And it's a storage, so is there a tenant, like, other than who might be present running it? If you can clarify the difference in this situation for a commercial property between tenant and customer?
In this instance, for the RV storage, the tenants would be the owners of the RVs.
Okay. They're considered tenants?
They're, yes.
Okay.
Or customers. So that's why it kind of tenant slash customers.
And the, the sign would have to say tenant slash customer?
Correct. The verbiage does say, "Final design, verbiage, and placement location shall be subject to the review and approval of the Public Works Department."
Okay, thank you.
Quick question for Chris. Chris, if we were to change that language, what, did you have anything in particular in mind?
Uh, no, but I see Ms. Dean has her hand up. I, I guess I, again, out of all the things that have to be done for this project in this very comprehensive condition of approval, it just baffles my understanding that this would be the thing that would hang the, the applicant up. I mean, I think we've got a quality applicant, it's, you know, a, a project where there's a need for it, they're already operating the storage. I just have a hard time understanding what the objection really is, because financially, you're talking a couple hundred dollars a month to have dumpsters dumped. It's just, I don't understand the burden, and I'd love to hear more about that from Ms. Dean's perspective.
Yes, Ms. Dean, can you speak to that?
Okay, great. I, I couldn't quite tell if you can hear me once again, but thank you, thank you for the opportunity to speak to that, and actually, to the commissioners' questions generally. So our concern is, if you think about what the use is, which is simply the storage of RVs, right, that have been somewhere and, where the folks have been somewhere, traveled, et cetera, they pull their RV in, it is not usual for them to be able to drop off whatever trash they have imported into the facility, and that is burdensome, and it could be substantial. And it, it just tends to give permission for imported trash to be dealt with by the applicant instead of by the folks who are storing their RVs. And if you think about it in terms of what the storage facility that's already operating does, the storage facility does not have that requirement. So people come in, they store their stuff, and if they have trash, they take it with them. And we had the expectation, now I would say the hope, that the same kind of system would be what is required for RV storage. I hope that helps explain the circumstance that we are concerned about.
I guess my question would be that, but, but we don't have a way of measuring what that impact really is. We're just speculating right now.
Well, we do, yes, because it's not normal. You're, you're correct. We don't know, because in other RV storage facilities, including the one that we presented information about last time we were there, they don't have this requirement.
I, I guess my point would be, if in fact, one, it may not be an issue, as just described, we don't know if it's a problem or not. If it does become a problem, adjust your price. Charge five dollars a month more at a, you know, 200 or whatever number of units are there, you, you'll probably make money out of it.
Well, Mr. Matthews, with all due respect, I, I think that, that is a planning commission directing a business owner on how to do their business, right?
No, we're talking about a condition of approval that is consistent with other developments. It's not, this is not something unique to just your development. Maile, am I correct on that?
Trash enclosure requirements are, are not unique to this particular development. They are required for all commercial, residential, and industrial projects. And actually, I should clarify, when I say residential, for enclosures, it's for multifamily residential.
Let me get some clarity, because the applicant has stated that for storages, usually people take their trash with them, but as far as I'm familiar, there is a trash area at storage facilities, usually an enclosed trash area. And if I'm understanding the presentation properly, there's still going to be a trash area there. So I'm just trying to understand why the applicant feels that the sign is going to invite more trash. And that's why I was trying to understand the difference between tenant and customer, because I can understand, like, maybe if there are apartments in the area or people that live on the property, then there can be some confusion about what's a tenant versus what's the customer. But if there is a trash area already there, does the sign make that much of a difference? Or, and let me clarify, are we, for the applicant, is the issue the sign and the trash area? Because it seems like what happened last week is the area that was required was reduced. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we're still going to have a trash area there. Now the issue is the sign, or is the issue both?
Originally, the appeal that was presented to you at the October 12th meeting touched on the signage, as we read, stating that tenants and customers have access, and also the size of the enclosure. That was what was written in the appeal. During the comment period, the appellant did throw out that they would rather not have the enclosure altogether. However, that was not part of the written appeal, and it is a standard city condition of development for every development to have a trash enclosure.
So can, so can you guys please explain to me what we are trying to get? What are we looking at here today?
Well, for tonight, a lot of deliberation was had at your last meeting, and the motion that was made was to approve the resolution with revisions to the size of the trash enclosure. So tonight was to simply provide you that updated resolution and make that action finalized for you guys to take action on that resolution.
So are the applicants still unhappy with the resolution that's before us this evening? I am so sorry.
That's all right. I can't necessarily speak to their feelings towards it. There, this, and Ethan, please feel free to step in if I misspeak, but this meeting was not another public hearing. It was not necessarily to have further deliberations. It was to bring back the revised resolution to the planning commission to take action on, but it is within your purview to make amendments within your motion.
Okay, that's clarifying it, because I was not understanding if we're having another deliberation, or we are here to adopt what was already somewhat resolved last week.
That, that's correct. The intent was not to further deliberate, but it is within your purview to, to change the motion now. But last week, the commission made a decision to not amend that specific condition relating to the signage.
Thank you.
Okay, do we need any more discussion? Do I have a motion to approve item A, Resolution PC 2022-12?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution PC 2022-12.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Sheehan, will you conduct the roll call?
Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Greavy?
Approve.
Commissioner Warblin?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Commissioner Matthews?
Approve.
Commissioner Cruzen?
Yes.
And Chairperson Childs?
Yes. Okay. So that brings us to our final item of the night. The director's reports?
Yes, thank you. Just a few items to update you. I think myself and Dave Feinstein have been letting you know that we were recruiting another senior planner, so he has started. His first day was on Monday. Name is Tendai Matanga. He should be presenting to you shortly. We've got a lot of projects already kind of queued up for him to take on, so we just wanted to inform you of that. We're very excited to have another planner on our team. They, we do have some items for your upcoming November 9th Planning Commission. One of them will be Raising Cane's as a fast food place, so that will be in front of you for next week, or sorry, next meeting, excuse me. And we also have some Heart of Fairfield amendments, ordinance amendments. So we'll have two items for you at your next Planning Commission meeting. Additionally, I did just want to note, and I apologize, I don't have my old notes, but at the last meeting, one of the commissioners had requested to get some more information on homeless shelters and alternative homeless housing. City staff is currently working with the Housing Division, and so we will continue to work closely with them until we have some information, a good package of information to present to the commission. And that is all I have.
Thank you for your report. Do any commissioners have any information items? See none?
I don't have any items, but I can't recall if we welcomed you last meeting, so welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. We are now adjourned to our next meeting on November 9th.